The museum that you remember.
It's still a home to Lunenburg County's heritage and to Bridgewater's story, but now it's so much more.
A hub of art and culture.
A home to events and celebrations, to the things that we hold dear and that make us special.
To experiences that are universal. And now, we need you.
The Bridgewater Museum Commission is looking for new members.
For just a few hours of your time each month, you can help the museum grow.
Help shape programming to welcome new residents and to make them feel at home.
Help to tell stories that need to be heard.
And help Desperse Museum thrive as a centre for heritage, art and culture in our community.
For more info or to apply, visit bridgewater.ca/serv.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauss Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing, we're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
This isn't the museum that you remember.
It's still a home to Lunenburg County's heritage and to Bridgewater's story, but now it's so much more.
A hub of art and culture.
A home to events and celebrations, to the things that we hold dear and that make us special.
To experiences that are universal. And now, we need you.
The Bridgewater Museum Commission is looking for new members.
For just a few hours of your time each month, you can help the museum grow.
Help shape programming to welcome new residents and to make them feel at home.
Help to tell stories that need to be heard.
And help Desperse Museum thrive as a centre for heritage, art and culture in our community.
For more info or to apply, visit bridgewater.ca/serv.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauss Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Dean, everyone, I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order and of course acknowledge that Town of Bridgewater is in Mi'kmaqie, which is the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it's always a pleasure and privilege to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, motion to approve the agenda circulated, please. Moved by, I was gonna say first by Councilor Cogan, moved by Councilor Cogan, second by Councilor McDonald, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Any announcements from members of council? But the FCM, is that where you're, do you want to talk about the FCM?
Well, the mayor and I attended the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference two weeks ago now, a week and a bit ago.
Yeah.
And yeah, it was great to see about 1,200 delegates in attendance in Regina, Saskatchewan, and had a lot of good conversations, primarily networking conversations that were quite eye-opening, solid trade show, and some very good sessions, particularly some of the political commentary, so that was quite interesting as well.
Yeah, it was good, there'll be more from us. We spoke to a couple of corporations, I guess, that have some very interesting offerings for not just Town of Bridgewater, but for the region. So I think we'll hopefully put that together and we'll present that to council. Probably worth noting that Federation of Canadian Municipalities now represents 93% of the population, so 93% of the population, which is, that's amazing, that's a lot of municipalities represented. So that's important, and the other thing is that, what, I guess I learned, because I didn't know this until it was, there was a senator there who spoke, municipalities don't have an official voice with the federal government. Our only conduit to the federal government is through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So unlike, like the provincial government, we have, we have kind of a rapport, we're creatures of the province, if you will, and so we have that direct link. There is no such link with the feds, so obviously the FCM is important, which then makes me scratch my head and wonder why the other 7% of Canadians aren't represented, because it means they really don't have a voice at the federal table, but that was interesting. Any other announcements?
I'm not gonna tell my whole wrestling story, now that I'm a professional wrestler. On Friday night, there was wrestling at the Big X, which was, there was a huge crowd. I'll be honest, I didn't know what to expect, so it was sold out and then some. Energetic crowd, and it was a huge success, and I went from just introducing Ryan, who most people know him as, he works at Gauss, but he's a wrestler, so I got to introduce him, and then the villain appeared and tried to take a swing at me, but we threw him out of the ring over the top rope, but it was just, it was so cool. I went home and I was like, my eyes were all, my wife was like, what happened? I was so excited to tell this story, so. I say that because it'll be coming back in like a month, and it's really worth checking out, so. I was happy for the organizers who put that on, and you know, post-COVID, you wonder, not necessarily when these events will come back, but if they're gonna come back, and if they come back, are they gonna be less successful, because people are in a kind of a different state of either I don't want to go where there's crowds, or they have a new routine? Clearly that was not the case, so. It gives me hope for other events like our musical on the riverbank and other things like that, Canada Day, where we're hoping crowds will come out, so that's good. Anything else? All right, we'll go down to delegations. So we have Kayla is here with the Bridgewater Watershed Protection Alliance to talk about Atlantic whitefish protection. So welcome, come on down. The podium is yours, you have 10 minutes, but that doesn't include questions from us, so.
Perfect, because when I did this at home, it took me like 15 to 20 minutes, so I can cut so much out. So first of all, my name is Kayla, and I would like to thank you, council, for the opportunity to present on this important matter today of the Wilderness Area Designation for the Petite Rivière Watershed, and to express our group's appreciation for you listening this evening. Today, I'm representing the Bridgewater Watershed Protection Alliance, which, sorry, been a while since I spoke in public, COVID and whatnot, which was formed to oppose the lumber, the...
Don't take your time to worry about it.
Which was formed to oppose the lumber harvest in watersheds and work to have those lands designated as wildlife areas. And I'm also representing Helping Nature Heal Incorporated today, a local business with an aptitude for ecological restoration and helping people build, or helping our communities build a more sustainable future. I will walk you through the reasons why we are asking for your support today. Our presentation makes a strong case for why the watersheds in the larger Petit area need to be protected and designated as wilderness areas. Though we are relieved that the Department of Natural Resources granted an indefinite hold on the harvest, that decision is insufficient because it can easily be lifted. The department spokesperson noted that their primary concern was the road construction for the harvest would impact the lake. That could easily change if Westfor, the company that is Harvest Forward at the moment, submits a new road plan that addresses concerns, that would address concerns about crossing a wetland where a member of our group found endangered lichens and reported them to the The Wilderness Area Designation would provide ongoing protection and elimination for the need for our citizens to organize anytime there is a threat to our watershed. I'm going to provide five grounds for the wilderness designation. First of all would be the Atlantic whitefish. You should be able to flip slides. So first of all is the Atlantic whitefish. The Petite Rivière Watershed, and in particular, Menomak Lake, is the last remaining place on earth where there are whitefish, the first freshwater fish to be placed on the endangered species list. The community and I find it very troubling to witness our government consider a course of action that could remove an entire species of, species from the web of life. This situation is a perfect example of the need to follow the precautionary principle. If one cannot state with certainty that the activity will not harm this species on the verge of extinction, then we must stop. We are being provided an opportunity to do something memorable. Instead, the economic value of 100 hectares is being seriously considered as more of an important, more important than the whitefish, other species at risk and our water supply in general. The action plan for the Atlantic whitefish specifically recommends that public lands adjacent to the Petit watershed lakes be protected by Nova Scotian Environment and that it be legally established as a wilderness area. The whitefish strategy was developed in coordination with several levels of government along with a member, along with a number of NGOs. Yet we are still waiting for the implementation of this key recommendation. Sadly, it is not the only example of where DNRR failed to follow through on their commitments to protect crown land in the watershed. In 2012, the Nova Scotian Government purchased 25,000 hectares from Bowwater Merceries specifically to meet its goal of protecting 12% of lands. Of that purchase, 91 hectares were in the Petite Rivière Watershed. The commitment for legal protection was never put in place, and the lands that were purchased appeared in the recent harvest proposal. Secondly, let's consider biodiversity. So behind in my slides. We'll figure it out. Slide six. There we go. So this screenshot of a satellite imagery of tree gain and loss in the watershed, you can see that the area around the three watershed lakes has been relatively undisturbed for almost 20 years. Residents of the area indicate that it has been this way for decades. The same map indicates that the rest of the Petit watershed has significant forestry and other activities leading to tree loss. Slide seven, this guy, shows that our county has had a 13% decrease in tree cover over the last 20 years. The up part of the watershed is an exception, and we have the opportunity to permanently protect it. Wilderness designation in this area could help reduce forestry-related habitat fragmentation, the primary cause of biodiversity loss. One member of our group is a lichen expert and has spent several days in and around the proposed harvest site, and some of us as went as a group. Our efforts resulted in finding four species at risk, black lichen, black lichen, black foam lichen, white-rimmed wrinkled shingled lichen, wrinkled shingled lichen, and the blue felt lichen, which were all reported to the DNRR. It's all out of order, I'm so sorry. Alrighty, if this small effort on only a fraction of the entire watershed and restricted to only lichen yielded identification of so many examples of species at risk, it begs the question of what would occur if we extended these efforts to other species and to the entire watershed? The area we focused on has several biodiverse mini wetlands of the north lakes, which include mini wetlands with mature mixed forests of ash, maple poplar, white and yellow spruce, oak, balsam fir, white spruce giving way to white and red pine as you rise up on each edge, as well as a varying amount of mosses that carpet the floor, the wet floored area, and a lush abundance of lichen covering every tree, including several rare endangered, several rare and endangered varieties. There are varieties of birds, including eagles, geese, ducks, and tiny scattered rivulets and ponds, our homes to salamanders and frog species. These areas are likely to yield more lichen finds as we go back and find them. Protection of such biodiverse habitats contribute to its abilities to sequester carbon and meet our climate targets. Both biodiversity loss and carbon sequestering landscapes impose significant financial loss to society as that new research indicates the outweighing benefit of unsustainably exploiting our forest resources. Natural habitats have economic value in that they can regulate greenhouse gases and that drive climate change, they filter the air and water, recycle nutrients back into the environment and prevent erosion. In a study of 24 worldwide sites, which assumed each ton of carbon cost global society $31, was estimated that 71% of the study sites had greater monetary value as natural habitats, including 100% of the forest sites. The ecosystem value provided by the Canadian Forest is estimated to be between $5,000 and $46,000 per hectare in natural capital benefits. The 200-acre Acadian Forest Site studied was Tuscan Lake near Digby and is determined to provide $26,000 a year of valued in environmental benefits. Third is water supply. Sometimes in a water-rich province such as NS, we can take it for granted. The WWF stated that by 2025, at current consumption rates, 2/3 of the world's population will be faced with water shortages. Already 2.7 billion people find water scarcity for at least one month per year. We need to take protection of our water supply more seriously. The designation of the watershed area was, oh, I have another example, that's what that is, sorry, one second. Here we go. So this site was an extensive gold mine and land, and there was land disturbance throughout the late 1800s and 1900s, with 92-mile shafts in the area. Industrial activities around the lakes could impact the water quality through increased sediment level, carbon carrying load capacity, and algae blooms, as well as arsenic release. So fourth, we have recreational opportunities and quality of life. A wilderness designation would protect these lands for the enjoyment of current and future generations. It is unusual to find an area undisturbed and biodiverse with a large tracts of forest, three lakes, two with next-to-no habitation within 10 minutes of a major population center. There are old logging roads that serve as ATV trails and walking trails throughout. The area can be, can provide easy hiking access to residents and is valuable to those who are unable to go further afield to access wilderness. When public transit is at some point developed, the municipality, it would easily be included, an entry to one of these watersheds on its route. Additionally, there are fuel savings costs and carbon saving costs as the wilderness designation may make it more attractive for recreational destinations. A mounting body of evidence indicates that nature has benefits for physical, psychological and cognitive wellbeing, wilderness areas that are near and easy to access and more utilized, thus leveraging such benefits which translates into health savings costs. And fifth, and finally... There's a beautiful picture of the lake there. So fifth, we are falling behind in protecting our lands. Lunenburg County ranks 14th out of 18 counties in regards to the amount of land either designated with a wilderness area or nature reserve. With 10,000 hectares protected, or 3% of the county's total, the premier has committed to increasing protected lands from current 13% to 20% by 2030. That's over 300,000 hectares. The amount of land in question in the Petite Rivière Watershed is approximately 2,000 hectares, or 12% of the entire Petit watershed, 17,000 hectares. Since some parcels of public land straddle the watershed with portions falling outside, the actual public land in the watershed amount is only 1,500 acres. So council, what can you do? Decide as a council to write our Minister of Environment or sign our submission that all public lands in the Petit watershed to be designated as a wilderness area. Council support is essential to such a request being taken seriously and will also likely help fast-track the application. This is an opportunity to protect one of the few remaining lands in Lunenburg County that has significant ecological value. It is an important water source and whose proximity to our largest population center provides exceptional recreational opportunities. We have been collecting signatures from residents, asking that Petit watershed crown lands be designated as a wilderness area for our submission to the Honourable Tim Hallman.
Great.
That's all I got for you.
I know this is something that we've been working on for decades. My first committee that I was appointed to in 2004, when I was first councillor, was the Petite Rivière Watershed Advisory Committee, where we had to come up with the first plan in conjunction with Municipalities of Lunenburg on how to protect the watershed. We came up with that plan and submitted it, and I think that was, then they said that was no good. And then I think we've done it a few times. Deputy Mayor, you can probably add to that, you're the, do you want to? Like, we're trying. Like, we're trying. It's a long, convoluted process.
Yeah. I know we were alarmed when the announcement for the logging was going to take place, especially when a number of times we've been asked by the province to create a watershed plan. We created a watershed plan, and then, as you noted, crown land, which is not controlled by us or the municipality, is used for other purposes. So, all that to say, we're on the same page.
Awesome. We are just mainly looking for support tonight. It's not a wag finger or anything, of course. We appreciate all that you guys do, and again, for even just listening to me tonight.
Are there questions from members of council? Council Thorburn?
Just one. When the Premier reached out in September 2021, sending that letter to his ministers to protect 20%, has there been any follow-up in the last nine months? Has the province done anything? Because they run on a four-year cycle. So, if you want something done, they've got to soon get at it to help us do what we want to do. So, I was just wondering, has anything been done?
No, that's the whole point of the residents and this group even forming, is that we have found no action, which is why we're here tonight, asking for just more support so we can make sure that it's still heard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Probably should also refer the presentation to Public Service Commission as well. So, their Public Service Commission oversees our water utilities, so we'll make sure they get a copy of that as well. And then, so normally when we receive delegations, we receive the information, and then we do a little bit of research, and we'll kind of build this up, and it'll come back to council.
True. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. As we stay in kind of our delegation timeline, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on any topic in particular? Going once, going twice? No? Okay, we will move to the... We have the minutes of May 24th council meeting there. Are there any errors or omissions? Hearing none, because motion approves the minutes is circulated. Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we are down to planning, and we have a public hearing for the second and final reading for amendments to the municipal planning strategy engagement program content regulations. And I see our planners coming down, so I will declare this public hearing as open, and just note that all the statutory requirements have all been met. And then you have the agenda, which is this item that I just noted. I'll turn it over to Ms. Childs to walk us through.
Thank you. So, this amendment originates with staff in the Community Development Department. In December 2019, Section 204A, the Engagement Program's Content Regulations, was added to the Municipal Government Act, and it requires that municipalities engage with adjacent municipalities when a council is adopting or amending a municipal planning strategy. The Province of Nova Scotia is requiring municipalities to have the program in place by December 2022. There was a pre-existing section of the MGA that required municipalities to engage budding municipalities when amending or adopting an MPS, but the new section requires that councils make it explicit through policy. And the policy respecting an engagement program can exist as either a policy of council or as part of the municipal planning strategy. And so through this process, staff from the Town of Bridgewater, Municipality of the District of Lunenburg, Town of Lunenburg, Town of Mahone Bay, and the Municipality of Chester met to ensure there was regional agreeance on how to approach the policy regulations. The group worked together to determine what processes to include in the policy, the notification areas, and when to provide notification. And the group decided that in addition to the requirement to engage with municipalities when adopting or amending a municipal planning strategy, that staff from each municipality should also engage on the creation or review of a land use bylaw, the creation or review of a subdivision bylaw, the preparation of a development agreement, MPS amendment or LUB amendment, depending on where the property is located. And so for Bridgewater, that would be when the property is located within 500 meters of the town boundary, as well as the preparation of an MPS amendment or an LUB amendment when that amendment is associated with the statements of provincial interest. And staff are proposing that the town's engagement program policy exists in the MPS, not as a standalone policy, because that's where current public participation process policy already exists. So staff are proposing an additional policy, IM-8, under Section 17.5, public participation processes. So staff are recommending that council gives second and final consideration to the proposed MPS amendments.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council? This is second reading, so we've had a pretty good discussion. And we are the applicant, so I guess we don't need to...
Yep.
Kind of hear from the applicant, so that's us. Nothing from council? All right. I will close the public hearing and then ask council if they're prepared to make a motion. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Is there a public that might be...
Oh, sorry, yes. Are there members of the public that wish to speak to these... Any of these changes? No? Okay. All right. Would you like to make the motion, please?
I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the amendments of the municipal planning strategy as contained in Appendix A of Document 22-044B for the Engagement Program Content Regulations.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And sticking with planning, we have municipal planning strategy amendments, flood mitigation requirements for Le Havre River Development Agreement area.
So, this application was received by Jarski Architecture Limited on behalf of Black Bay Real Estate Group on May 18th, and it's to explore options to amend the municipal planning strategy, or the MPS, to ensure that policy regarding flood mitigation is not overly restrictive. And this amendment arose from the applicant's current development agreement application for 388 King Street. So just a reminder of that application. It's to construct a 71-unit residential development with ground floor commercial. The building would be six stories from King Street and seven stories from the Le Havre River. There would be one floor of underground parking that's visible as a full story from the back of the building, and part of that story would be visible above ground at the front, just due to the slope of the lot, which slopes down towards the river. The ground floor, which is located above the parking, would consist of commercial and residential uses, and the upper floors would be solely residential. And this property is located in the Le Havre River Development Agreement area, or the LRDAA, so specific MPS policies need to be analyzed for development agreements in this area. So, the applicant's consulting engineers, Able Engineering, completed a flood report for 388 King Street, analyzing flood situations and potential mitigative solutions for the proposed development. And their recommended solution was to design the building to have a basement floor elevation of 4.35 meters and a ground floor elevation of 7.398 meters. And this has been incorporated into the design that staff had received, with the underground parking on that basement floor level, and the residential and commercial units beginning on the ground floor, which is the 7.398-meter elevation. However, staff determined that this did not follow the town's policy as it is currently worded. Able Engineering believes that the town's current policy is too restrictive and not reasonable. Able Engineering states that they undertook due diligence to determine that the proposed building elevation is sufficient, and that any additional appropriate mitigative measures do not exist. So, the current relevant MPS policies regarding the LRDAA are LRD-A1 and LR3. And Policy LRD-A1 begins by saying that "no development shall be permitted in any area where flood presents a risk or hazard to people and property as determined by a qualified person." And to date, town staff have deemed this provision unsatisfied when it comes to 388 King Street, so therefore could not positively recommend the development moving forward. And this is because a qualified person, in this case Able Engineering, is unable to state that flooding does not present a risk or hazard to property based on the maximum modeling scenario for flooding. They've designed the building to ensure that residential units or people are located above the flood risk area, so part of the current policy would be met. And then Policy LR3 references the 2013 flood study, says that it should be referred to to ensure that flooding and erosion risks are reasonably mitigated in accordance with Policy LRD-A1. And this policy states the council should ensure that flooding and erosion risks are reasonably mitigated, which Able does believe the proposed building design has achieved. So while this general policy of the MPS appears to provide some flexibility to plan mitigative measures rationally, subject to the site in question, Policy LRD-A1, the first one I spoke about, is much more determinative and does not necessarily align with the intent of Policy LR3. The flood study that's referenced in the MPS policies includes various flooding scenarios, including situations of 50-year and 100-year return periods of flood events, and scenarios that consider both 2.2-meters and 3.5-meter storm surges. Also, the MPS... Or sorry, although the flood study provides data and analysis, it does not include recommendations on how the town should integrate the findings of the studies, including which storm surge, 2.2-meters or 3.5-meters to use. And so the MPS policy does not explicitly state what scenario should be used to analyze proposed developments. So staff requested the 3.5-meter storm surge scenario to be used, in addition to the 100-year return period, as it is the maximum flood scenario presented in the study. So by using the ordinary high watermark, the normal annual high tide, the 100-year return period, and the 2.2-meter storm surge, Able Engineering determined the water could reach 4.1 meters at 388 King Street, and so therefore they set the proposed basement floor elevations to that 4.35 meters in their design. Town engineering staff noted that with this proposed basement elevation, the basement would still flood with approximately 1 meter of water during a 100-year storm during high tide with the 3.5-meter storm surge. And Able Engineering stated that with the 3.5-meter storm surge, no flood mitigation measures could be implemented to prevent the proposed building or other parts of downtown Bridgewater from flooding. Able Engineering used the 2.2-meter storm surge because they believe it was a more rational situation to measure. If they used the 3.5-meter storm surge, staff could not provide a positive recommendation to the development because, as using terms from the policy, property would be at risk, even if people may not be, because the basement level would be parking, it wouldn't contain habitable space. So staff, Able Engineering, and the applicant held a meeting to discuss the flood report and the application, and it was determined that to meet town's policy, the only option would be to raise the building approximately an additional 1 meter. And this would cause issues with accessibility and would, from staff's perspective, planning staff's perspective, not be supported by other MPS policies regarding downtown development, compatibility of building design, and positive contributions to the streetscape. Currently, the proposed ground floor is already above King Street grade, and the building already includes stairs and a ramp to reach the ground floor, so with an additional 1-meter elevation, the applicant has stated the usable ramp would not be possible and an elevator to the ground floor, so the level with the commercial use and the entrance to the residential units would need to be included. So people with mobility issues, physical disabilities, and those with strollers would be required to use this more tedious and exclusionary point of access, the elevator, as they couldn't use a ramp. And additionally, the riverscape and King Street aesthetics, the functional integration of the building, and the comfort of pedestrians would be negatively affected, because the building would then be on a higher podium, and people would be further vertically separated from access points to the building and the lively ground floor uses. So the applicant has requested an amendment to the MPS, because they and Able Engineering believe that the town's policy is too restrictive, and believe that there are ways to mitigate impacts of flood risk through the building design they have already proposed. This includes having parking located in the basement level, which would still be at an elevation above the 2.2-meter storm surge height, while ensuring that the commercial and residential space would be above the 3.5-meter storm surge height, therefore ensuring habitable space would not be negatively affected. Through the MPS amendment process, the interpretation and the wording of the policy, the existing policy, would be examined, and the focus would be on applying reasonable flood mitigation measures for protection of people and property, while also balancing other policies of the MPS, including integration into the landscape, downtown development, compatibility with the neighborhood, aesthetic design, and strategic density. And after some initial research of flood mitigation policies in other Nova Scotia municipalities, some analysis of the town's flood mapping and various flood scenarios, conversations with the applicant about the possible or lack of possible mitigative measures, and noting a flood-related recommendation from the town's sanitary stormwater master plan from 2018 that states the town should set a minimum level of development for habitable space above 5 meters, of 5 meters above sea level, for the tidal portion of the Le Havre River. Staff are recommending that council direct staff to initiate the amendment process. And by initiating this amendment process, council would not be approving anything, rather giving staff the direction to review the proposed amendment. And this would not be a site-specific amendment for 388 King Street, although it was applied for by these applicants. Rather, it would affect the entire LRDAA. There are other properties in town where the current policy may be too restrictive for development, and as an unintended result, would create an obstacle to the town's built form and objectives. The amendments would explore options to mitigate flooding in a reasonable and safe way, while also balancing other objectives and policies. So the purpose of this initiation report and presentation is to advise council that a request has been made to amend the town's policy, and to request that council decide whether staff should initiate the MPS amendment process. And at this point in the process, the engineering department has not completed any analysis. Planning staff have completed initial analysis, but more would be completed if directed to move forward, and the public has not yet been involved. So in order to complete further analysis, staff are recommending that council direct staff to begin the process to amend the MPS.
That is one detailed report. So thank you today, I appreciate that. Questions from council? I mean, this is just the beginning of a process, which is good. I like the idea of finding that balance. What is the will of council? Council Thorburn? Yes, please.
Yeah. I would move that council of the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to begin the process to amend the municipal planning strategy regarding flood mitigation requirements in Le Havre River Development Agreement area, and undertake a public participation meeting on June 29, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. All right. We're going down to reports and recommendations. Energize Bridgewater Contract with Efficiency One. And as much as I'd love everyone to stay, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Sometimes people are like, can we though? Can we stay? You can stay if you want, or you can go anytime.
So, for the report that you have in front of you, I'm here to request that council consider staff's recommendation to use alternative procurement practices to approve the chief administrative officer to enter into a contract with Efficiency One to develop and deliver a two-year pilot program for the Housing Energy Management System component of the Energize Bridgewater project, which is a core part of the Energy Poverty Reduction Program, Smart Cities Challenge project. Bridgewater committed to reducing energy poverty and greenhouse gas emissions, and to reduce and stabilize energy costs for residents experiencing energy poverty in town. That was our Smart Cities Challenge project, and of which we have received funding through Infrastructure Canada and ACOA and others to develop and deliver a solution to energy poverty that we know our community to experience right now. This contract with Efficiency One would allow us to move into the service delivery phase to finalize the detailed program design, and to pilot and test our, what we're calling the Housing Energy Management System, which is really the moving into retrofitting homes where people are experiencing energy poverty. The proposal from Efficiency One proposes that over these next two years, the detailed design would be finalized, and 125 dwelling units would be completed within that timeframe at minimum. And so as I said, that includes the final detailed program design, and it would leverage all the existing programs that Efficiency currently provides, home warming, home energy assessment, and it would leverage all those affordable multifamily homing, multifamily funding programs. It would allow us to leverage those existing programs with that energy poverty reduction focus, because that's really what makes the Energize Bridgewater program unique, is that we are trying to focus all these programs. There's multiple different programs out there for energy efficiency, but none with that holistic lens of understanding where people are experiencing energy poverty, and really trying to get solutions to their dwellings, and to additionally go further and provide continuous energy management support. So leveraging the data and connected technology piece and the ongoing expertise of those with energy efficiency knowledge to continue, once retrofits happen, then how to deepen your energy savings, deepen your energy efficiency by behavior changes, by understanding more about the place in which you live and how to maximize those efficiencies. E1 is uniquely qualified, which is why we're requesting an alternative procurement process under our current purchasing and tendering policy 79, Alternative Procurement, Section 18, 1 FNR. So sort of an absence of competition. I'm summarizing here. It's in detail in the report, but that absence of competition, that uniquely qualified organization, and a public body, not-for-profit. So E1, Efficiency One, is a nonprofit that holds a contract with the Province of Nova Scotia to deliver the Efficiency Nova Scotia program. So they deliver existing programs and/or are the source of the programs that other nonprofits and other organizations in the province are also assisting to deliver. So all of the home warming programs...
So all of the home warming program, as I said, the Affordable Multifamily, the Housing Energy Assessment Program, and they will also be the holder of the federal government program for greener homes. And the whole organization is also focused on energy efficiency. All of their staff, whether it's from their communications to their program managers, they are all technically minded and are focused on energy efficiency, so they have that ability to attract and retain qualified staff. And you'll note that in their proposal, they're proposing to hire a program manager to deliver this pilot project. They also have extensive contractor networks across the province. Staff did a preliminary assessment of options following a recommendation from one of the studies that we had done earlier in the program, where the consultants recommended that Efficiency be considered as the service delivery partner. So we did a preliminary assessment of what the options were from private and public sector, and really saw what they were recommending, and that leveraging that nonprofit sector and the different levels of government within a small province really helps us to, we're all working towards those same goals. We're keeping that knowledge in the public and nonprofit sector, and that the, sort of maximizing that accountability and the potential benefits to residents that we're, you know, the knowledge that we're creating will remain within the public realm. So the two-year pilot is at a cost of $442,000. The financials are there in the report. Direct costs account for over half of that, and those are the costs that would be to support hiring of those service organizations that would be administering the home energy audits, developing the retrofit plans. So that's, you know, cost to contractors, and includes the cost of registration fees that those participating in the program wouldn't have to pay the $199 registration fee for the home energy assessment and things like that. It estimates 88 single-unit dwellings and 37 multi-unit dwellings over the course of the two years, really that we're testing through this first year, refining that detailed program plan, and starting a little bit smaller and then really ramping up so that we can just move aggressively towards our targets. The overall project target is 350 homes by the end of 2025. And so some of those other direct costs are, as I said, that all these different programs, greener homes, home warming, they have different requirements in the home energy assessments. And so part of these direct costs are to cover doing one comprehensive assessment that meets the requirements of all the different programs. Because as I said, this is about leveraging all the existing opportunities for retrofits through every incentive there. Also in the report is, we are actually, as a municipal body, we can't just simply give the resident, any resident money for energy efficiency. We have to do it through the Property-Assessed Clean Energy Financing Program that we're allowed to do, which is more of a loan. It is not a grant. Whereas Efficiency, under Efficiency Nova Scotia, Efficiency One provides grants and incentives directly to property owners for energy efficiency upgrades. So it helps us with that ability to be able to provide grants. The administrative and program costs outlined in the financials are the estimated cost of hiring a program manager to specifically focus on the Bridgewater program. So this wouldn't be side of desk to one of the other program managers that they have running home warming or Affordable Multifamily program. And also, they have, as Efficiency One is also governed by its utility, so it's governed by the Utility and Review Board, they have some, and it's included in the contract, actually, some of their funding formulas for accounting then for also overhead audit fees, you know, IT infrastructure and those sorts of general operating as well. So those are all the costs. What is not covered in those numbers before you are any additional retrofit costs that the individual property owner would need to take on. So the intention is that the comprehensive energy audit happens and a retrofit plan is developed to achieve a 52% energy reduction through these things, and that we would stack all the existing programs to get, to maximize how much of that energy reduction could we achieve through existing programs that are funded? And then the pieces that are not funded, how those costs are not included in this. So there would be additional costs to some of the properties that may need to pace finance or clean energy financing for the difference between what they can achieve through existing programs and what they would need to achieve to hit that 52% reduction mark. So those are not available at this time. But the town was a recipient in partnership with the Clean Foundation for a $5 million grant loan through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities that allows us to fund our property assessed, the Clean Energy Financing Program without having to borrow at cost from the Municipal Finance Corp. So it allows for zero to, you know, no interest, to very, very low interest loans for our pace financing. I had a couple other notes here that I wanted to say. Just the contract, the draft contract is included, and so the recommendation, the recommended motion actually includes in a manner similar to, there are some final legal reviews that are happening right now to ensure that intellectual property, so there's a Efficiency has, under its agreement with the province, has very strong requirements under their own intellectual property, because should they no longer be the program provider for, under the name Efficiency Nova Scotia, all of that IP stays with the province and Efficiency Nova Scotia and a new organization that the province would enter into a contract with, would hold that IP. But some of this intellectual property, rather, some of this intellectual property will be co-developed and will be developed for Energize Bridgewater and Isars as well. So that's one of the, you'll see the recommendations there where there's, in the contract, where we really recognize that we're both bringing our own intellectual property into this to create something unique and innovative and hopefully something that will benefit all Nova Scotians at some point in time. And that there's strong reporting requirements, collaborative, a true collaborative process within that contract. So if there's any questions.
Questions, Councilor Fuhrer.
I just have a question about the timeline. So this is for two years. You mentioned our goal is to do 350 homes by 2025. So is there, are we looking to extend that, this two-year contract for another year after this?
Not at this time, no. We would, within six months of the end of that contract, we'll have a firm sense of how it's going and what a next, what we would then do with it. So at this point, it is just a two-year pilot. And then we'll, that's a good question, but at this point, it's just a two-year pilot, and then we have quarterly meetings, we'll be monitoring it the whole way to see where we go from there.
From there.
Thanks.
Other questions? And I know we're all kind of anxious on seeing retrofits start to take place, so, yeah.
Yeah, my question, and I think I mentioned it the other night, it's a pretty aggressive timeline with, year one is not too big, 22 year, it's single, but the next year you've got 66 singles and 37 multifamily units. Do you think that is realistic? Can it be that?
I certainly am hoping so. But no, I do think it is realistic based on what, where we are in the process, how far we have come in the detailed design on the Energize team, and the capacity and capability of Efficiency. I do think that it's possible. I know that we'll be, you know, trying to ramp up very, very quickly based on the increase in interest in our current Clean Energy Financing Program, based on what we know for wait lifts on existing Efficiency Programs, I think that we will be able to achieve it. I think, you know, there are a lot of external factors that could pose a challenge. We recognize that, and we're trying our best to mitigate that. So I know that in the news, there was a news article on CBC around shortages of contractors and qualified people to do work. That is very high on our radar of how we will mitigate that, and we would work closely with our partners on that. You know, there's, I think, overall in the program, the focus has been on single-family units, but there's also, yeah, there's a wide range that we'll be able to achieve, I believe.
I share your concern. I mean, it's out of our hands and to a certain degree, out of E1's hands, but we have a contractor shortage like I've never seen before, so hopefully things start to change and...
Well, I will support it, and as a matter of fact, I'll make the motion because I have enough faith that I know that it will be a good one. Thank you for your report. And I would so move that town council of Tana Bridgewater delegate authority to the chief executive officer to use alternate procurement practices to approve the contract between the town and Efficiency One in a manner similar to the draft, as contained in Appendix X, for the service delivery on the Housing Energy Management System of the Energize Bridgewater Project for a cost of $442,000 plus HST over a two-year period to mention the effective date of the contract.
Seconded, Councilor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Now, there's lots of work. More work. 9.2 is Block House Visitor Information Center lease for 2023. Do you want to go over that one?
So the town and the District of Wunnerberg entered into a 10-year lease for the present location of the Visitor Information Center on Cornwall Road and Block House. So that lease expires March 31, 2023. There's no requirement under the lease to give notice if we wish to not continue with that, but out of courtesy, we're suggesting that we, if there's not an interest in proceeding with an extension to the lease, that we advise our partners as well as the landlord of council's intention. The recommendation is that council provide formal notice to terminate the lease April 30th, 2023, and that council direct staff to look at alternative approaches to making visitor information available for the 2023 tourism season and beyond. Some of the stats show that visitor, and of course, we have the pandemic in there, so that kind of throws things off again as well, but in 2017, visitor numbers were 12,000, and in 2019, they were 8,800. So they saw a drop in those two years. Of course, with COVID in 2020, that went down to just over 1,000, and 2021, it increased to 2,163. So it's anticipated that the numbers will be a bit stronger this year. However, since 2013, the way that the traveling public access information with respects to traveling within an area, visitor information has changed drastically. So Chester actually had the Regional Enterprise Network at the time do a study that looked at how visitor information can be delivered and some of the trends within that and some of the challenges that they face. And at that time, it was noted in the REN study that technology was becoming the main way that people were, with their smartphones or their tablets, how they were accessing information, and bricks and mortar weren't necessarily the most effective way to reach the public. Not that it didn't serve a purpose, it was just, it was changing a bit. So they, and the other thing is, is that the bricks and mortar don't have the ability to move to where the people are. So one of the things that that study had recommended is that you look at having the flexibility to go to where people are, so pop-ups and having information provided that way to the traveling public. So they actually did go there to Peggy's Cove and the Margaret's Bay, Farmer's Markets, wherever people congregated, they were there to say, hey, come check this out. So they were happy with that model, and I believe to this day, they continue with that model. The province of Nova Scotia is also looking at kind of how we, how information, tourism information can be provided electronically through your, through your devices, and they're working on a, I think they call it Digital Nova Scotia, and that's looking at how, consultants are looking at how that, we can provide that information, that communities can utilize that. The amount of rent that we paid for the Visitor Information Center, our share of that, is $19,264, and staff are suggesting that there may be better ways, more effective ways to reach the traveling public than the bricks and mortar model. And for that reason, it's suggested that the lease not be renewed, that council give direction to staff, that we explore those alternative means of doing that, bring a report back that could identify for council how we could repurpose that $19,000 in the 2023, 24 fiscal year for tourism purposes and visitor information services.
Great. Any questions on that? I think it's, I think it is one of those things where we all, we all kind of maybe saw that coming. Someone prepared to make a motion. Councilor McDonald.
The town council for the town of Bridgewater provide formal notice to terminate the lease effective April 30th, 2023, and direct staff to develop alternative approaches to making visitor information available for the 2023 tourism season and beyond.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Fuhrer. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. It just makes me think like we were five days in Regina. I'd only ever been there in the winter, but years ago. I don't think, you know the city well, and we navigated solely on technology, right? You can download an offline map, we found local, a lot of places we went to had a QR code on the table, and then from that, it went to everything that was around, it's always updated. So I think that's the way things are headed. 9.3, Tender for, as my screen refreshes, I think what I gotta say, Tender for New Survey Grade GPS System. You must love talking about this stuff. This just sounds like something really cool. No pressure, but you have to make it sound really cool now.
Oh, I don't know with that. I still can't believe after, when I started, how comfortable it is being more up here now than it was being when I first started 20 years ago, so. So yeah, luckily, most of you can remember back in December, we had tried to tender the new GPS survey equipment. Unfortunately, at that time, it came in over budget. At that time, we had a budget of $45,000, 21, 22 budget. So we deferred the purchase for this fiscal year, and it was included in the 22, 23 operating capital budget, and utilizing our existing gear. So luckily, the gear held, and luckily with the tendering of this new equipment, we actually came in under budget. So just to go through there, we did issue a tender, tender package in April. We received three submissions, two from one proponent, one from another. Those tender submissions were evaluated based on price, compliance with specifications, warranty, and added value. The lowest, the submission with the, they're all being compliant, and the submission with the highest score was brand positioning equipment. The budget for the, for the new equipment is $70,000, and if awarded to Brand Positioning Limited, we'd be approximately $34,000 on the budget. Staff are recommending the purchase of additional components to improve the functionality of the unit, meaning a keyboard, so you can do everything from your hands, rather than punching, backup batteries and fuel charger to make sure we get a whole day of work out of it, as well as the extended warranty, so that we, in case of an incident may happen. So we see, staff see no reason why not to award the brand positioning equipment. Of course, council can elect not to award the recommended additional items that would improve the functionality. So staff, two recommendations, that we award Tender 22-04E to the lowest compliant Tender Brand Positioning and Technology for an estimated cost of $39,543.90, including HST, or for a net value of $35,859.78 in the net HST. The engineering department further recommends the purchase of additional equipment, the keyboard, battery charger, and as well as the warranty for a total value of $55,953.60, including HST, or $5,398.93 in net HST.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Thorburn?
I know the extended warranty is two years, so the original warranty is just for one year, or is that for two years?
It is for, I'd have to go back to the tendering, but the warranty was two-year for the, it's broken up depending on the component. Sorry. That, so the data collector would be two years and the receiver one. So it's just extending it that much longer.
Okay. Question? Anyone else? Someone prepared to make a motion. Councilor Fuhrer, thank you.
I'll make a motion that council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommending of engineering department staff and award Tender 22-04E New Survey Grade GPS System to the lowest compliant Tender Brand Positioning and Technology for an estimated cost of $39,543.90, including HST for $35,859.78. including HST for thirty-five thousand eight fifty-nine seventy-eight, net HST, and further approved the purchase of additional equipment identified to improve the functionality of the recommended unit and the extended warranty for an estimated total additional cost of five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents, including HST and five thousand three ninety-eight, ninety-three cents, net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nine point four, we have our building permit application report for May twenty twenty-two, and it's there for obviously council and the public's perusal. Looks like year-to-date building estimates are almost fifty percent greater than last year, which was a busy year. So, I know that translates into very, very busy staff. So, we very much appreciate the challenges that staff are facing with the, the volume of work that is coming our way. Any questions on that? You can reach out to staff, and they'll be more than happy to answer you. Nine point five is amendments to policy eighty-eight donations.
So, this is a notice that at the next council meeting, which should be June twenty-eighth, council will consider amendments and to that policy eighty-eight, and it deems that provides will approve that. And those amendments will enable town-led public art projects through our donations program, our donations policy. So, you can have, unless you want the full presentation now, we'll be doing it again on June twenty-eighth for your consideration.
Let's save it.
Okay.
Build the excitement. Does anyone have any questions on this one, though, first? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald?
Move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of municipal government act that at the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, amendments to policy eighty-eight donations policy will be considered to enable town-led public art projects through, through the public art program.
Seconded by Council Conklin. Hearing discussion, question, question they called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, so let's also come back to the next council meeting. The next item is also giving notice, policy three, travel proposed, kilometerage and car allowance rates. That's a real word?
Yes, it is. I know.
Did you check that one?
We can't say it either.
That sounds like something I would type in standard and say, that's not a real word.
But it is. So, this is just to look at amendments that would bring our mileage rate, as well as our car allowance rate, in line with the provincial rate, which was the intent of the policy, the numbers just went updated. So, again, notice, and on June twenty-eighth, council can receive the full presentation. Okay?
Someone prepared to make that motion, or you have a question?
Before I do, is the government increasing the rate the same as this now?
This is the, what's being recommended is the provincial mileage.
Yep. Okay. Okay. So, I would move that town council, town of Bridgewater, give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of the municipal government act that at the June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two council meeting, amendments to policy three, travel would be considered to adopt a provincial kilometers rate, along with a new car rate for regular users and associate kilometers rate anticipated to be effective July first, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin. We'll have a good debate probably at the next meeting, unless there's any questions. Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Another notice, I know you're a big fan of these. I don't think we had notice of motion before. Was Richard the first CAO that gave us notices, or is it, is it? All right. Amendment personnel policy flexible work options.
So, this would enable amendments to the personnel policy that would provide for flex work options, such as a four-day compressed work week, earned days off, variable hours, as well as work from home arrangements. And the policy, we kind of set out the criteria and enable guidelines to be, operational guidelines to be developed by the CAO to meet operational requirements. And again, on June twenty-eighth, we can get into the full detail of it.
So, you can see that it's gonna be a busy meeting on June twenty-eighth, like a sense of pattern of a longer meeting. So, I'm just saying that so that we don't have a bunch of.
Other things?
Of, no, of people saying, I can't, I can't make it that day, because it's gonna be long, I'm just kidding. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Council McDonald, thank you.
Move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of the municipal government act that at the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, amendments to the personnel policy will be considered to enable flexible working options for the town of Bridgewater employees.
Seconded by Council Fager, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Down to nine point eight, grants to organizations, application from South Shore Exhibition. So, first, it's probably really nice to note that after two years, the exhibition will be returning, and the parade will be returning. So, that's, I know that's been two very difficult years for organizations like that with, you know, their main event taken away from them. So, as is customary, they've come to the town and are asking for some in-kind services as we, as we work to help for the parade route and other items. So, that's there. Is there someone prepared to make a motion, or does anyone have questions? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I guess I'm a little bit confused by the motion, the terminology, I guess, acceptable to council. So, are we going to define that as part of the motion, what is acceptable to council? And then, part of that would also include the fact that, I realize the in-kind services request is for twenty-five hundred dollars, but we also obviously have the police component, and so what is the total value that the town of Bridgewater taxpayer is providing to the exhibition?
So, it's about, a total is six thousand.
Okay.
So, the police commission meeting last week, I believe it was the week before, it was noted that it's thirty-five hundred. And that's budgeted for each year to provide support to the exhibition. We suggested that perhaps acceptable to council would be the recognition that's been provided in the past. And so, that's been whenever they note sponsors, the town would be noted as one, much like the province or other municipal units would be, that, that would be the measure, if that's the way that the motion would be worded.
Essentially, has it, it's been in past practice. It's kind of what we, when we discussed with the, the president of the exhibition. That's kind of where we landed, was in the, in the past, essentially, the town and through the town, its taxpayers were acknowledged, to the CAO's point, like other municipalities, or the province, for example, noted as contributors to the exhibition. I guess through correspondence, on my understanding, is that other municipalities in the province are not requesting any recognition. Is that not accurate now?
We didn't have that conversation with them. Most, most that we know is that when they, when they recognize sponsors, our name would be noted. There's print material that had sponsors on it, then the town's logo would be there to note that we were sponsors. But there wasn't any indication about whether or not others were requesting not to be noted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, our conversation was, every year, the town has been recognized for its, you know, very substantial contribution. I think there was just some confusion over the potential of it not being seen as a contribution equal to.
Cash.
Of cash, and obviously, it is, because it's still an expenditure of six thousand dollars from the taxpayer. So, it was, I would chalk it up to, it was just a bit of miscommunication, and we landed very quickly on the same page. So, I think, I think we're, we're good in getting that, that recognition that has been, like, like the CAO said, in their print material, in other, like in their program, things like that. Yeah, I don't know if.
Nope.
Unless you were looking for something.
Well, I mean, taxpayer of Bridgewater obviously is paying for this, ultimately, out of their own pocket. And so, when the exhibition layers out the various levels of sponsorship and what each level of that sponsorship cash gets, and some of those businesses would obviously be giving services in kind, not just cash, why isn't the town of Bridgewater then given those various components of that level of sponsorship? So, you know, I mentioned, I think one of them is, I don't know, X amount of passes to the exhibition. Well, town of Bridgewater could perhaps take those passes and give them to the kids, that, you know, the less fortunate kids in the town. I don't know, just things like that, that it doesn't cost the exhibition anything, so why, why is that not being provided? I guess was my.
I think it's because there was a difference between a grant and a sponsorship. So, what we're doing is not actually sponsoring the exhibition, we're giving a grant to the exhibition. So, there's, there's still that, and I'm on the same page, we still need to be recognized, because it is still six thousand dollars of taxpayer money. Versus a sponsorship, which is very much, someone is, like a corporate entity is giving money, but they're, in exchange for that, they are wanting tickets and certain things, a booth or something like that. So, and I think that's actually ultimately what was the confusion, was we were, we were co-mingling grant and sponsorship when what they asked for was a grant. So, it's probably a conversation we should be having, whether we want to sponsor or, or give grants. But I know that when you start sponsoring, it becomes a very, we had this conversation.
Yeah, there is a difference between a sponsorship and a grant in terms of what we're able to do.
Yeah. So, I don't, mind you, it's a not-for-profit, so it's.
Yes, that's right.
It's a little bit easier than some of the other ones, so. So, I don't know if that, if that helps you. Ultimately, for me, it was, I, I was confused when initially we were told that, that there would be no recognition for the contribution from, like we said, the taxpayer. So, we, again, that seemed to be just a misunderstanding, it's cleared up very quickly. I don't know if there's more that council wants from that at this time, Council McDonald?
And my, my main concern for any recognition for grants or sponsorship that are given is so the taxpayer is aware that it's been given, and if they see the logo on a sponsorship for an event, they have the opportunity to contact us and say, hey, you know, I take issue with this because, so they're aware that those dollars are going, it's, you know, to me, a piece of transparency. Whether it's grant or sponsorship, that's, I guess I've never really kind of considered the difference between the two. And I'd be interested in knowing what are the differences between the two, what are the limitations? What does one allow us to do that the other dozens?
Yeah, so actually, I think the reference to the sponsorship piece and our limitations is like for profit. So, I think it was when we were looking at sports teams and different things like that, that might be business as opposed to nonprofit. And as the mayor indicated, with the sponsorship, you're getting, you're getting, say, twenty-five hundred dollars, and in exchange for that, you're getting tickets, you're getting a banner, you're getting whatever it might be. Whereas a grant is normally, what there might be, you might put conditions on it, but you're not buying something off a list. You're just giving, you're giving that. And so, what I'm hearing council say, like with the grant, is we'll give that, but we want it to be conditional, that we want to be on the print material and noted as a contributor to the exhibition. But sponsorship would be, we're giving you twenty-five hundred, and that's the package that comes with the twenty-five hundred, right? Because we'll take you.
So, it's certainly a conversation we can add, like if, if, if council wants to, you know, look at something like for the exhibition, for example, like getting tickets in return for perhaps people who normally wouldn't be able to go to the exhibition, things like that. I think that's something we can look at, but I.
Yeah, I mean, it was just an idea, because of the level of, you know, kind of looking at the perks, if you like, of that level of sponsorship. There's a lot of things that a town and people within the town might benefit from, I guess.
And I don't know their, I don't know their different levels. Council Thorburn?
I agree with the deputy mayor, when I first read that, the town wasn't going to get recognized at all if it wasn't given a cash donation, but, you know, when we gave six thousand dollars, whether it's a donation in kind service, it's six thousand dollars a lot in line, and it is cash. Somebody's gonna pay money to get that work done. So, I'm glad to see that at least we're getting recognized as we should be, and as it always happened, I guess, if you go a little deeper. Anyway, I will support it.
Are you looking up to see what they're?
Yeah, it doesn't give you the amounts, but it does note there's, it certainly have a sponsorship page.
Yeah, I did, I circulated it as part of that long correspondence on the topic.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't note the price points, I don't think.
Yeah.
No, it has, it has, well, not on the website, I can't, unless it's under something different than sponsors.
Okay, any further questions on that? Is someone, yes, please.
I'll move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the request of twenty-five hundred dollars in-kind services as per the South Shore Exhibition's community development grant application conditional upon recognition acceptable to council for its contribution.
Seconded by, second here, Council Conklin. Had some discussion, any further discussion, Council McDonald?
Just looking at the website, there is nothing to acknowledge on the entire website that there's been a grant from the town of Bridgewater. Is that one of our requirements that we're acknowledged there? So, be on their, like their program print material and stuff like that. So, when we, I don't know if you've seen their program material. So, when we write them to tell them that we're providing the in-kind, the condition in exchange for that, is that the town's logo appears on their print material?
And I would assume the website as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. On all, on their promotional material, I think is how we would normally frame that, correct?
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Nine point nine, Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Survey for Service Exchange Renegotiation, MGA Review Committee. Yeah.
So, we had discussed this at a discussion session, simply because it involved a lot of discussion about the, the questions that the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities are asking municipalities to respond to as part of the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities and the Department of Municipal Affairs, their, their review of the service exchange agreement, as well as the municipal government act. And so, they've asked each municipality to have one submission per municipality, which is why it's on the agenda tonight, is to get council's concurrence that this is in fact representative of your views of the questions that are being asked. And a lot of the questions kind of, they're kind of really around, you know, what responsibilities should municipalities have under service exchange, and what responsibilities should go to the province? And then, what, what, you know, what do we need more support for? And I believe some of, some of the comments that we had at the discussion session centered around, the last time there was a service exchange, it was really about fiscal neutrality. So, it was making sure that the province took over this suite of services, that that totaled so much. And then municipalities and the exchange would not take more burden than the same amount. So, it was about ensuring that no one took, when we were exchanging, that one didn't have more value than the other. So, it kind of leveled out. And that's kind of been the problem with some of the things, because some of them don't make sense. For, for example, roads, rurals, rurals only pay a per-kilometer rate, most of them do anyway, for, for J-class roads, whereas towns are responsible for all their roads. Under policing, there's the provincial policing contract, where the province pays thirty percent of the policing costs from municipalities who contract with the RCMP. Yet towns are responsible, if they have their own police force, for a hundred percent of those costs. So, there is a number of inequalities in kind of what, how rurals and, and say, urbans or towns were treated within that. So, it was kind of noted that, that while that's important, don't let it result in perhaps arrangements that don't necess, or inconsistencies between how you treat rurals and urbans. Basically, we talked about the responsibilities that would remain with the province, were those ones that needed to have a consistency across the broader base. So, that, that would be like healthcare and justice and corrections and, and those, those types of services, where it shouldn't vary based on municipality, it should be consistent across the province and, and for a reason. Whereas municipalities would be more of those services to property and individuals within the community. And so, that's, that's kind of how the responsibilities kind of struck out in terms of what was felt should stay with municipalities, those land use planning, building, recreation, salt waste management, road sidewalks, those types of things, and the province would have those broader services. It was noted that the three municipal expenditures that our council believes should be reviewed are policing. And that's, in particular, from the town's perspective, the costs are escalating. It's one of the larger. of the growth that's happening, that cost keeps growing. And often the calls are the result of incoming traffic, or users of the regional, of our regional services such as business, shopping, entertainment, traffic. So in essence, a lot of our response, for instance, traffic, motor vehicle accidents, a lot of those are from traffic that originates from outside of town, but comes into town because we're a service center. And we pay for 100% of those policing costs, and, and we also pay our income tax, which subsidizes rural policing cost. So we feel that that needs to be looked at. Roads is another one where the town pays 100% for its roads, which supports regional traffic. And mind you, our businesses see the benefit of that, because they're designed to bring people in and, and allow for that growth. But at the same time, we're, we're shouldering 100% of those costs. And again, it's another scenario of, of town residents' income tax helps subsidize rural roads in rural municipalities, so some inequities there. And wastewater. And this is one where, you know, each municipal unit's responsible for their wastewater services. It does, there's no difference between rural and, and town, but because of the higher density, wastewater is a must for the town, and we're finding it challenging to meet the federal standards. And there needs to be greater funding in order for us to, to do that and continue to do that as a town. So those are what we said we felt needed to be looked at. In terms of what services would we have concern if the province said you're now responsible for this, housing, healthcare, and administration of provincial regulations and such as coastal regulations or Coastal Act. And then they talk, they asked about the MGA and some recent changes, and what things did we find to be useful, and it was noted that the ability to negotiate for the purposes of increasing affordable housing units and commercial development districts were a benefit. And what, what discretionary abilities in the MGA were done that our council felt were not useful and why. And from the list, it was noted the ability to fund developments that increase accessibility, not that we're against that, it's just that this was put in place to address provincial regulations and standards, and having that, that ability or an enabling ability within the MGA creates that expectation that towns will fund private sector businesses and meeting the accessibility regulations, which is clearly another burden on the taxpayer. What additional powers should, do we believe municipalities should be given? The ability to do public-private partnerships and be able to sell land for economic development purposes at less than market value. And Jessica noted during our discussion session that the MGA was amended to allow the Cape Breton Regional Municipality to do that, and we felt that that should be extended to other municipal units within Nova Scotia and not just limited to CVRM. And then in terms of regulations that are causing us some pressures, wastewater, cost of police evidentiary lab analysis services in the Coastal Protection Act. And some others were the accessibility regulations and drinking water regulations. Well, good, they put pressure on us. And then they got into questions about municipal consolidation, and there it was, what conditions this council believe would make municipal consolidation advisable. And they had a list, so went from that west. Limited access to qualified personnel, fiscal insolvency, regional decisions unable to be made but required, such as planning, harmonizing standards, et cetera. And communities of interest might drive that, that need as well. So consolidation is voluntary. That was the difference between consolidation is two municipal units want to make that application together. And then what incentives could be put in place to make amalgamation a voluntary option. And based on history and how amalgamations have been handled in the past, financial incentives that would remove the financial liabilities that come with amalgamating two units. And looking at funding models for grants such as gas tax may level the playing field, which would reduce some of the antagonism or competition and reduce the threat. And then in terms of what newer expanded revenue sources or tools does your municipal unit believe to be most viable? Here it was basically that property tax revenue should just be exclusive to municipal governments. We should not be funding provincial services from property tax, and we do. So all the mandatory contributions to education, corrections, public housing, the province required, gets that money from property tax. And the suggestion was use, use your income tax to do that, as opposed, because those are services to people as opposed to property, and leave the property tax for municipalities so that we can meet the challenges that come our way. And then the municipal financial capacity grant needs to be further funded or better funded, some more equalization. And then we, this is our plug for the advance levy. Say, we asked for it, we want it. And then that was pretty much it, that was kind of a note. In terms of special consideration, again, that towns are often services to a region, and, and the town of Bridgewater, our population numbers can double in a day, or triple in a day, and that increases the cost to towns of like infrastructure challenges, policing, all those things. And that's not reflected in models such as the municipal financial, financial capacity grant, which is the town's grant of 50,000, or the gas tax funding formula, which often towns get less than rurals do. And that was primarily it. So it's here tonight to see if there's anything else that council wants to add to that, if this reflects the conversation that was had at the discussion session. And any, we'll submit it, it's due today, but we'll submit it tomorrow and put it in.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Tanner, just like cue, question 14, was there any, I think there's a dropdown list or something, but was there any dropdown option for just pure geography, like geographical practicality, like, you know, if you look at town of Lunenburg, town of Mahone Bay, that have, town of Mahone Bay has Oakland and Martins River, town of Lunenburg has Blue Rocks, but, you know, it might have been Arrow Canicola at one point in time, said, "I don't know why Blue Rocks is just not part of the town of Lunenburg versus Modal." And when you look at the Modal map, it's...
Yeah, no, it wasn't dropdown, so we can certainly add that in. So there'll be geography. I think that's kind of, we can, we can like, I believe, under communities of interest, I believe councillor Colwell had noted that, and that may be...
Maybe the meaning of it?
Yeah, but we could certainly clarify that, you know, it's influenced by geography.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question. Other questions? Council Thorburn?
Education, you know, and I think we covered that, that the province should be funding that 100%, because our taxpayers are getting hit twice. And probably that's not going to happen, because we've been after that since 2012, the first year I come on, looking for fairness with the MGA on, on municipal units. But if we could get to a point where the province pays so much per student, and that's what the schools and area get, maybe it's time that the municipalities paid so much per student, not based on gross revenue, which goes up thousands of dollars each year, which we get nothing for. And on top of that, the first thing we do each snowstorm is do the plowing, the sidewalks, traffic areas, and all that stuff is not put in there. It's a huge burden to municipal units with schools into it. So I think in fairness, if we could at least get per capita, per student, that the municipal units would pay, that would add some fairness, because they're never going to take over the schools and not charge us zero. Just ain't going to happen.
To me, there, there should be no funding formulas based on, purely on population. Population is a meaningless formula, because it doesn't incorporate need. So to me, and this is not just provincial, obviously, I had this discussion at the FCM, it's a struggle I constantly have, is, is the, you know, is municipalities were expected to be overjoyed at the doubling of the gas tax, except you're just, you're, you're giving out money so inefficiently and so ineffectively that a municipality with virtually no infrastructure, and I'm, I'm not picking on any of our neighbors, because they have some infrastructure, but there are, there are municipalities across this country that have not a lick of infrastructure, but they have a high population that would get millions of dollars in funding for infrastructure that they can't use, where urban centers like Mahone Bay, Bridgewater, Lunenburg, get thousands of dollars to deal with millions of dollars of infrastructure. So, I mean, you mentioned our wastewater challenge, and that's a huge infrastructure burden, and yet we don't, the funding is allocated by how many people. It's not even, it doesn't even account for the people that are in town. Like, we swell to 35,000 people during the day that use our infrastructure, but they use a number of 8,700 in order to make their funding formula. It doesn't, it makes less than no sense. So that's, I mean, I think what you've got here kind of captures the need for that, but if I had one thing to say to the premier or a minister at the federal level, it was, it would be scrap any and all funding formulas that just count people and say, "That must address the need." Kind of like whether it's education, or roads, or whatever it is, like it's, need, you can always justify need, right? But you can't just, "Oh, I have, I have 50 people, you have 25 people, I should get more money even though I don't offer any services." So, anyway. It's the same rant I'm going to say next year, and the year after that. But if members of the public are watching and they're wondering, you know, why we can't do more roads, or why we can't, we can't do more sidewalks, or do more trails, or prune more trees, or all these things, at the end of the day, we get a fraction of the money of what other municipalities get, and we literally have municipalities in this province that cannot spend the money, because they cannot find or create a project that actually can use that money, because they just have no need for it. So it sits in a bank account, taxpayer money, sitting in an account, doing nothing. I don't know how else to describe it, so...
It does good with the fiscal indicators out.
Oh yeah, it looks, it looks great on a fiscal indicator, you're right. So, maybe that's, that's, that's my rant. We could talk about this for hours. We could bring Director Finas down, talk about this for hours, engineering, community development. Are there any comments?
No, no comments. I'm just, are you ready for a motion? I'll be happy to make a motion.
Is this your way of saying you need to stop talking?
No, no, no.
No, you go ahead.
Not at all.
Please, please save me from myself, make a motion.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to provide input to the service exchange renegotiation and MGA review. CERM G A Committee through its survey is discussed in the, at the June 6th discussion session and is presented in document 22-094A.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Just before we get to business, arising unfinished business, I will say, when I speak to our, our rural counterparts, they actually don't know a lot of this. So it, it sounds like we're kind of maybe picking on them, but they, I think a lot of them assume that we're all set up the same, that they don't pay for their roads, we don't pay for our roads. Their policing is subsidized, so our policing must be subsidized. So when I have those conversations, and you talk about fairness and things like that, I think a lot of them are left scratching their head, saying, "Why? Why are you so bent out of shape out of this?" Because they don't realize that there's two tiers of municipal governments in, I think it's across Canada, really, because the funding formulas are essentially the same. So I don't think they realize that we get so much less, because we're required to deliver a different level of service. Now I'm done. All right, business arising and unfinished business, proposed vending bylaw amendments, second and final reading.
So these amendments, if approved tonight at second reading, will amend our vending bylaw. That would enable us to expand the permitted vending locations to all property-zoned park or recreational in the land use bylaw. So basically, that would, the existing permitted vending areas are noted in the report. Open King Street, Woodland Gardens, Bridgewater Outdoor Pool, Kinsman Athletic Field, Le Havre Sports, Shipyards Landing, Bidgeon Wisca Park, King Street Court, and Riverside Park. And then what these amendments would do would be open that up further to King Street, abutting the Shipyards Landing, the St. Philip's Street Playground, Glenwood Mill Parks, Barry Nino's Park, Tannery Park, Senior Citizens Park, Michelin Nature Discovery Park, the Generations Active Park, Flan Allen Park and Playground, and the Aberdeen Green. And then all other existing and future town-owned lots that we may zone park or recreational would be just automatically included in when, if they're zoned that way. And then we're also removing the restriction on the maximum number of vendors in the parks as well.
I think the question was asked at the, like, the last meeting, in terms of removing the number of vendor staff to make sure that there's not conflicting...
There's criteria within the bylaw about that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I know, just get ahead of that. Are there any questions on this? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Conklin?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the proposed amendment to chapter 197, vending bylaw as presented in document 22-072A, adopt as bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Begir. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item 10.2, traffic safety concerns, traffic calming requests for Star Street. So a couple weeks ago, we had a presentation from Concerned Citizens regarding traffic, various traffic issues on Star Street. And so we promised this would return, and, and of course, explain that staff input would, and would be, they'd be gathering some information and stuff. I don't know if you had anything else to add beyond that?
No, it's just if council's interested in having staff look at traffic calming, I suggest it probably would be for more than Star Street, simply because that's not the only street in town, and you, you'd probably want to develop criteria around when you would want certain traffic calming measures, what they would be. So if council's interested in that, then direction would be given to have staff look at that. I would suggest that given the workload right now, it'd probably be something that we wouldn't see this season implemented, but perhaps we could look at it for, for next fiscal year and any, any budgetary impacts that might come along with that.
Yeah, which doesn't mean that we don't have enforcement and other, other measures. Want to make that...
Yeah, and I, I can say that, that at the council meeting, when it was received, it was asked if we would have the discussion at the police commission meeting as well. So that was held whenever, last week or the week before. And, and it was noted that the signs, the, the signs, the radar speed signs there that collect the speeds as cars go by. It was noted that there wasn't, there actually weren't many vehicles that were speeding on that road. The speeds were around 40 to 45. So there may be a perception based on the acceleration of the hill. But based on that data, there had, there wasn't a lot of concern, but the police have been made aware. And now that we have that new traffic enforcement officer, the police chief's aware that that concern has been raised that with councils, so they'll obviously include that within their territory to, to look at enforcement.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
So who would do the work for this report? Is this a traffic authority, or...
Engineering, yeah. So there would be standards, when you look at, say, bumps and bumps and, and different, different types of tools. It could be your future street designs and how wide your roads are, and different things that can influence speeds on roads as well. So they would, they would look at those and bring back some options for council that could address when you would want to look at it and implement it, and what that might look like. What do other communities do?
Council McDonald?
For, for knowledge, would it be possible to get some general information on speeding in the town of Bridgewater from the police department? You know, how many fences there are? You know, how many fences there are regularly, if there are certain areas that tend to be worse than others, if it's more neighborhoods, more, you know, collector's, whatever it may be. Just some general information to educate us as to whether there is a problem throughout town, if it's really, seems to be in specific areas or, you know, just so that when, when comments come in, whether it's email or to council, we have some information behind us on, and what they're doing as a response to those issues as well would be, would be good information to have when we get questions and emails about speeding.
Yeah, so we can ask them to give us some information on the radar speed, the data that they would be collecting in the various locations and violations and events, like traffic offenses that have happened, and yeah, any other general enforcement issues.
Obviously, they don't catch everyone, but if there's two tickets given out per week, there's a lot less of a problem than maybe I perceive there to be, or someone else perceives there to be.
I know the data from the trailer, the speed trailer helps. Also, the one, the sign that's in front of the school helps because there is, there's for sure speeding in areas of town, nobody's disputing that. But I, I know that there are times, the way they explained it made a lot of sense that, and again, I don't want anyone to think I'm not saying that there's speeding in town, but if someone's doing 30 and, or 20, let's say, and then the next person does 50, which is the speed limit, but if you thought that first person was doing 40, now 50 seems like it's 70, right? It's that, it's that perception which is, it's, I know that's the one that always kind of catches me. I live on a hill, and so I always think people are racing up the hill, and it certainly sounds like they are racing up the hill. But then when the, when the trailer's been there, it shows that, you know, it's 49, 50. But some of it's the sound, and some of it's that the car ahead of them went 30 up the hill, and I thought that car was doing 50. But all that has to be based on data, right? Because we can't just say there's no one speeding, we have to demonstrate that and enforcement is there. And I just think there's in situations where we're going to have to have traffic calming, calming measures. So, yeah, we just have to, staff have to get through some priority items in that paving, wastewater, stormwater stuff first, but we will get to it. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to provide a report with respect to traffic calming measures and budgetary impact with respect to the requests from residents of Star Street, document 22-087.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Perfect, thank you. Sorry, that was at the end. 10.3, amendments to policy 57, low income tax exemption. So this is just to make adjustments. Oh, we have Director of Finance here.
Hopefully, this one will be quick. If you recall, last year, when the tax rate changed, we also came to council about a year ago and asked for a change to the tax exemption amounts at that time. However, this year, we're bringing it back because a lot of the properties that are covered or are by this particular exemption would also, may also be capped properties. And so we know there was a significant increase of 5.4% CPI adjustment to properties that were capped. So those properties typically don't have very high increases in their assessed value. And I gave you kind of a 10-year history of that, and it's generally pretty low. This year, we know those properties even went up 5.4% for this current fiscal year that we're in. And so what we did was we looked at all the properties that previously to this year have applied for this low income exemption and looked at what their increase in their property tax would actually be in dollars. And so we wanted to increase or propose to increase the exemption amounts to offset about 50% of that increase. That's largely just due to the cap increasing. And so we made sure that the budget had some allowance in it for that, and so we brought it, bringing it to you at this time because starting in July, these applications will be going out to residents. And so the average, I think, it's approximately about a $10,000 increase overall in our tax dollars, just from the properties that have applied for this exemption in the past. And this exemption would allow about just over $5,000 of additional exemption for those people. And I can't give you the specifics on individual properties, but that gives you an idea. It's not costing the town a lot. It's approximately $5,600. Maybe some more, some additional residents apply this year as compared to last, but we've, we've ensured that we have enough budget for that as well.
Questions? Comments?
I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging that and bringing it to us. It's a good catch.
Yeah, no, exactly. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Fager?
Yes, I motion that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the amended low income tax exemption as presented in document 22-088 as policy 57 for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Conklin. Further discussion?
Question.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our last item, amendment 10.4, amendment to policy 89, fees for taxi fare rates.
So in council's taxi bylaw, there is a requirement that taxi owners can request a change in the taxi fee. It's set out in our, in our policy, so we amend it by policy. And the requirement is, is that they have to have a meeting, and at that meeting, they have to have a certain percentage, a vote. And the majority of those there would have to vote in favor of that. So Amanda did have a meeting, and that was held on Tuesday, May 17. Four owners were in attendance and to discuss and make a recommendation for, for a change in the fares and the rates. And the meeting was, was made at the request of the taxi owners. So it wasn't a staff-initiated amendment. The amendments that they're, they're suggesting are obviously in response to the escalation in fuel prices and the impact on their business. So you can see that in the schedule of our fees policy, what the changes are. So just one flat rate. They, they used to have a rate that was 6:00 AM to midnight, then midnight to 6:00 AM. And really, there's not, I don't believe we'd have taxi service right now that goes beyond business hours. We might have early morning, I believe it was, but they felt that they could have a rate that was just set one flat rate of $10. And that was for one passenger, two passengers, and then it increased up to 11. So some of it is a $2 increase, some of it's a $1.50, and so it just varies there. And then from town of Bridgewater to exit 12, it's $12 up to two people, and then a dollar extra for each additional person, and then before it was a $10 flat rate. And then coming back from exit 12 to town of Bridgewater, same thing. And then, and then if you have, if there's a request to pick up goods or parcels, it's 3.50. And waiting instructions, sometimes they have to wait for an individual while they're doing business, and they have a $30 for a half hour and a dollar for every minute essentially. So that's what's being recommended, and that was approved by, as per the bylaw in terms of the taxi owners and their, the majority vote to see these fee changes. So the recommendation is that council approve the changes to the fee policy that would implement the changes to the taxi fare rates for the town of Bridgewater.
Overly surprised with the cost of fuel. I'm sure you have questions.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Well, I was just wondering, is there a limit to how many times they can come annually to request an increase? I'm just, like, with the way things keep escalating, I'm just worried that this is not going to be enough to, unfortunately.
I think they can apply once they get enough of their members.
They can just keep going?
It says fares shall remain in effect until a fare change is requested by a majority vote of taxi and limousine owners in the town.
Okay, so we don't have a restriction.
So it could be, it could, it could happen again in another six months if, if fuel prices keep escalating.
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Thorburn?
I think it could happen next week. It's gone up about 60 cents since they put this in.
Yeah, I know.
And it doesn't show any where to stop, so. And I did get a call for a taxi driver who referred him to Amanda to get the process started. So we'd like to make that motion.
Sure.
If the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved amendment policy 88, fees, taxi fares, rate section, as presented in document 22-092, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Conklin. Councillor McDonald, yep?
I'm sure that we've discussed this before, but I can't remember. Why do we set the rates for taxis?
Because we have a bylaw that regulates taxis, and in that it's, I'm assuming it was just to, to level the playing field with respects to the prices being charged and for the consumer, the resident who would use that. We don't have to have a taxi bylaw, we don't have to regulate taxis or the fares they charge, but it's an enabling provision for municipal units, and we opted to do that.
So we regulate the vehicles to make sure they're safe and compliant, things like that?
Yeah.
I thought you were going to ask, I'll ask this question. I, I'd like to know what we need to do to ensure that we have taxis that run later in the day. I'm sure you've received the same concerns from citizens that I do, that when you don't have taxi service in the evening or in, at night, you know, when people are leaving an establishment, if they can't walk home, and they have to drive home. It used to be that you could get a cab. I've received a number of emails from people who work till 10 o'clock at night and are concerned about how they have to get home, walking across town when they don't own a car, but they used to take a cab, which they, it's not about the fee, they're not worried about paying the taxi fee, they're just, I'm not sure you can get a taxi after 5 or 6 o'clock at night. And that, that is a bit of a concern, and not to bring it up now to address, but I think if we're going to regulate taxis, should there be provisions in there where if you're going to operate a taxi business in the town of Bridgewater, you're going to operate at least between these hours? And I don't, I don't know. So to me, that's a discussion with taxi owners to figure out what we can do to support that, but it's a safety issue for many people.
Has this changed like pre-pandemic? Like, was this not an issue for getting a taxi in the evening?
I think it's been an increasing issue over the last, I'm going to say 10 years. So I can think of an occasion about 10 years ago where I got a cab at 11 o'clock at night, and maybe seven years ago, it was impossible. So it's, it's been difficult. And that's, I think that's quite consistent. I don't know if anyone else has had any luck, but I don't, I'm not trying to put the, I'm not blaming anyone, I just, I'd like to know what we can do. So you're increasing fares, does that help to also increase the hours you're prepared to operate?
It'd be interesting to find out the reason from them, because I wonder if the, not having the lounge and tavern and that business has impacted their ability to provide that service in the evenings, if there just isn't enough demand to warrant running the service for those hours.
Yeah.
Well, maybe one of us can reach out. Sort of flexibility of, you know, offering Uber and so on would help remedy that certainly because there's still people driving at that hour that could provide that service relatively easily.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, that's a conversation we should probably have as well. Just, you want to work with taxi owners, but you also have to ensure that, you know, the public can get around the community, the public can get around the community safely. So, to be continued, I guess. So we have a mover, we have a seconder. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. That's the end of this agenda. Just, we have an in-camera meeting after to discuss contract negotiations under section 22-2E of the MGA. And just a reminder that our next council meeting, which is normally on a Monday, is on a Tuesday. We're just bumping it down a day to, because of other commitments. That is all. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Councillor Thorburn, seconded by councillor McDonald. We are adjourned.